Van Hope, Chair of the meeting. And before I ask councillors to introduce themselves and continue with the meeting, I will hand over to Philippa just to do the housekeeping arrangements. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Evening, everyone. Before we start, there's just a few housekeeping arrangements to mention. Please, can I request that mobile telephones and other such equipment are switched to silent mode so as not to disturb the conduct of the meeting? There is no fire test planned for today. If there is an emergency evacuation, please take instruction from the council staff present. The assembly point is in the car park. The toilets or toilet facilities are situated through these double doors straight across. The meeting today is open to the public and will be streamed live and for subsequent broadcast via the council's website. You should be aware that the council is a data controller under the Data Protection Act. Data collected during this webcast will be retained in accordance with the council's published policy. By entering the meeting room, you are consenting to be filmed and to the possible use of those images and sound recordings for webcasting. One final thing to mention, we have hearing loops available. If you'd like to use one, please let us know. Thank you.
Thank you, Philippa. Before I actually start the meeting, I would like to announce that we've lost one of our councillors, councillor Vicky Priestley, who died earlier this month. So before I start, could I ask you all to stand, please, for just a short silence? Thank you. Councillor Vicky Priestley. Thank you. I've known Vicky for some 20 years, and she was elected to Bradford Parish Council, I think in the year 2000, the same time as I was elected to Bradford Parish Council. And she was also elected then as councillor for Walcliffe for two years, and then for the last 20 years has served as councillor for Stannington. Vicky was a friend and colleague, a lovely lady, and respected by all councillors and all council. Friendliness of Vicky stretched beyond the council. I make wedding cakes but don't decorate them, and Vicky's decorated wedding cakes for me. That was one of the things she did. She was also involved with many other sort of artistic things, but one wedding cake that we did, it was for a wedding in London, in Richmond Park, and I had the onerous task of taking the cake down in my boot of my car, and I was so relieved when I managed to drop it off at the lodge in the park, but Vicky was tremendous. The skills of decorating wedding cakes and baking and sewing and everything, but she had a lovely family as well. And in the end, it was a real burden and suffering that she had in Northern General Hospital and in the Macmillan care at Northern General. So God bless Vicky. Does anybody else want to say? Richard?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I've only known Vicky for four years, but in that time, I've really got to know her very well. And I know if Penny Baker was here tonight, she'd probably spend the next half an hour talking about her relationship and her wonderful times she had with Vicky. I mean, we have a saying in Stannington Ward, everybody knows Vicky, and Vicky knows everybody. And I think that sums her up. So thank you for the chance.
Thanks, Chair. I'm not going to say a great deal, Chair. As you well know, Vicky, yourself, and many other colleagues have years and years of involvement. Vicky was a good friend. She was a dedicated councillor. I well remember the times we shared on Bradford Parish Council, as well as City Council, and all the many things, as well as cake, construction and manufacture. Vicky was really, really focused on art, if you like, and certainly music. She was a patron of the Bradford Music Festival, and I know she went every year and supported it. And it's a great event, but there's not a lot more I can say. You've touched on it, and so has Richard. She'll be missed greatly. Lloyd, her husband, I know is distraught and very sad, and hopefully, in time, the perspective of time will help understand, help us all understand, just what a contribution she did make to the community in the north of Sheffield over many years. And as I said before, and you said, she'll be greatly missed. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Trevor. Moving on, could I ask the members just to introduce themselves to after me, Richard?
Thank you, Chair. Councillor Richard Williams, Member for Stannington Wood.
Councillor Mindy Reewen, Member for West Ecclesfield.
Councillor Anne Wishaker, Member for East Ecclesfield.
Councillor Alan Woodcock, Member for East Ecclesfield.
Councillor Shin Chen, Member for Stockbridge and Upper Don Ward.
Hello, Dave Luck, I'm the Community Manager for the North Two.
Hello, everyone, I'm Julia Groth, the Member for Stockbridge and Upper Don Ward.
I'm councillor, I feel I'm good. Oh, it's good. Councillor Rice, Member for the East Ecclesfield Ward.
At the back, Karl. Mark. Is he? And Theresa. Thank you. Before we proceed with the agenda, I'd like to explain how the meeting will work. First, we'll deal with the formal business of apologies, declarations, minutes of the last meeting, then we'll have public questions and answers. We'll then move on to the items of the North Area Community Budget. The head of manager, Dave Luck, will give us a presentation. Then we'll have updates on the town and parish councils, parks update, and play zones project. Item two is apologies for absence.
We have apologies for absence from councillor Janet Riddler, councillor Craig Gumbel-Pew, and councillor Penny Baker.
Item three is exclusion of the present public, and there are no items that require exclusion. Item four, declarations of interest. Do any members wish to declare any interest near the items of business on the agenda? No, thank you very much. Minutes of previous meeting, item agenda number five. These are the minutes of the last meeting, held on the 26th of September 23. Pages nine to 14. I'll knock, 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 go through. Has anybody got any matters rising? Okay. Now move to item number six, and it's public questions and petitions. We have a number of questions tonight. The first one is from Lewis Farrington, unable to attend the meeting tonight. And his question is, what plans do the Lack or Sheffield City Council have to further develop the Rivlin Playground according to the master plan? Richard, do you want to make a comment?
Yeah, I think potentially we've got some very exciting plans. We're currently looking at it. We have some potential funding to do something, and I will be sitting down with councillor Penny Baker and the officers to discuss this in the next few weeks.
Thank you, Richard. We have a parks item with Ruth Bell later. You pick that up later, Ruth. Yeah, thank you very much. The second question is from Trevor Bagshaw and Simon Ogden, have a question regarding the Stockbridge Town Deal Board. Have you got the microphone?
Thank you, Chair. You'll recall that we've got some questions to you, which you very kindly agreed to take up with the Towns Deal Board about the governance and consultation on the Stockbridge Town Fund Trails Project. The questions were, all papers or reports justifying the decisions of the Stockbridge Town Board are immediately made available for public scrutiny, as required by their own terms of reference. Genuine public and stakeholder consultation is carried out by the board prior to confirmation of any final decision on the Trails Project, as was promised in the board's own minutes and in their recent public statements. And the agenda's minutes and supporting reports of all board meetings, past and future, are published in full and in a timely and transparent manner, in line with council, city council practice, and Knowland principles. We've had a response from, yourself, from the Town Deal Board, basically saying that they've already made the decision, there is no more information available, and that's the end of the matter. Whilst the change in the board's practice to publish their minutes in a more timely fashion, which has just recently been adopted, is welcome, they are still failing to publish agendas or any papers in advance of those meetings, and alternate monthly meetings are held in secret under the title of workshops with no published records. The response from the Town Deal Board does not include any explanation or address any of the main issues that you raised. The absence anywhere in those minutes of any objective analysis, business case, or other evidence to support the decisions of the board generally, and in particular on the dropping of the Trails Project and adopting the Underbank Project, although it's claimed, without any evidence, to produce better and greater outputs and be focused on Stockbridge, the only conclusion is that either written reports and business cases are being withheld, or even more disturbingly, that the board is really taking those decisions just based on verbal advice from officers, as the record and their statements imply. Neither situation should be acceptable to any responsible accountable body, which in this case is the City Council and its officers. As a point of fact, both projects, the Trails Project previously proposed and the Underbank Project, are more or less equidistant from the town, although in fact, most of the Underbank Project falls outside Stockbridge Town Boundary, some of it actually not in Sheffield but in Barnsley. But that's not a reason to object to it. And to be fair, one element of the Underbank Project, i.e. the proposed new crossing of the heavily trafficked Manchester Road, is strategic and very welcome, as we say in our comments. The rest, in our view, is questionable in value and low priority compared to the previously proposed Trails Project. The board and project champions have failed to carry out any consultation with stakeholders or the public before taking the decision to act on Trails, which was back in May 2023. This was contrary to their previous clear public and personal commitments to do so, and then their further failure to reveal the decision until July. In a similar fashion, the board has again already adopted the Underbank Project and proved the diversion of almost half the Trails funding to other projects at its September 21st meeting. That was a month before they launched any public consultation on this proposal. The consultation that was offered appears to some to be a little tokenistic. It was deliberately brief, still lacking in any content or detail. Only very diagrammatic plans and brief descriptions were exhibited, and for just four hours on a working weekday afternoon. For anyone who missed that event, these materials were not available at the Stockbridge Town Deal Drop-In Centre, and they were not even uploaded to the Stockbridge Town Deal website until 11 days after the event. Although the website says have your say, there is no feedback form online and no indication of when the consultation period ends. Adding further confusion to the previous, sorry, adding further confusion, the previous for the Trails Project was also still featured on the website, with no indication that it had been scrapped. Project champions and council officers, whilst expressing their ongoing support for the Trail Project in principle, are still refusing to share with stakeholders any designs, costings, or other technical information all procured at the public expense, which would allow further other partners to begin to fundraise and promote the scheme, which they say they wish well. They've now further announced in their September minutes that they will no longer engage with significant groups of stakeholders, calling their polite request for this information vexatious. I've worked for the council for 36 years, I know what vexatious means. This is not it. Much has been made in public statements from certain board members, that some of those supporting the Upper Don Trail, myself included, are not even from Stockbridge. That is true. No, one more sentence, two more sentences. For a programme, one of whose fundamental objectives is to attract more visitors and customers to the town, this seems a little short-sighted. It is to be hoped that the North Local Area Committee will continue to support the efforts of genuine local people and charitable organisations, who simply want to help and contribute to the improvement of the city and the wellbeing of its citizens. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much for that. What you've just read out is quite different to what the question you asked on the 16th. Has any member's got anything to add? Because of what you've read out, I think we need time to digest that and look at the question that you did raise, which, some of it's in there, but some of it isn't, and we will respond to you in writing. Thank you. Other questions from the four, please? Mark? In the minutes of the next meeting, yeah, thank you. And we will respond to Simon, as we've circulated. Our next meeting isn't until next March. It seems a little unfortunate, as we actually have a member of the Stockbridge Town Deal Board here not to get any response to that. Isn't that the point of these meetings, not just to, as a postbox, to leave questions? Isn't it about discussion? Councillor herself, if she wants to respond. She doesn't wish to respond, that's fine. Thank you. Mark, you've raised the issue about litter on Stockbridge Bypass. Who is responsible?
Thank you very much. Hello, everybody. I'm Mark Whittaker, I'm the Mayor of Stockbridge. Now, we have a very well-respected litter picking group in Stockbridge who do really good work, and they are getting quite fed up now about the vast amount of litter that there seems to be on the bypass, coming down especially on the slip road towards Deep Car. And it is a sort of great mess. Now, councillors Growcurt, Chinchen, and Riddler have also been involved in this and been finding out some various bits of information, which has been very interesting and important, one of which is the different people who, the different sort of authorities who are responsible for this. The bypass goes through both Barnsley area and Sheffield area, but the road itself is Highways Department. Now, it looks very much like everyone is passing the buck to everybody else, and no one is prepared to set up some sort of systematic litter picking regime, and that's what it needs, not just an occasional once-a-year bomb or something, but a systematic regime of the litter picking. And the thing that really concerns me is that these litter pickers we have, the community groups, are very keen, enthusiastic people, but it is far, far too dangerous for them to go on the bypass or the slip road. So what I would really like the committee to do, if they could, is to find a permanent solution, not just a one-off solution every now and again, but a permanent solution to litter picking on the bypass. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Does anybody wish to comment? Lewis?
Yeah, thanks, Mark, for the question. And I should declare that I'm employed by National Highways, albeit not related to the A616. But it is a massive issue, that particular area, and we've obviously spoken about it last week or so. The slip road coming off the bypass is a real problem, and the reason is because it's not currently on Amy's network. It is within the boundary of Sheffield, and although the A616 is a National Highways road, generally for major A roads, the litter picking responsibility falls to the local authority. That's the case in most cases, there are some exceptions, but I don't believe the A616 is one of them. So the default is that it falls to the local authority. Of course, the bypass runs through parts of Barnsley, parts of Sheffield, that particular section is in Sheffield. I've been in contact with Barnsley, they've not alluded to the indicators that they've got an agreement with Sheffield to litter pick that area, so my assumption is that it should be a matter for Sheffield to deal with. But Amy have shown me their maps, and it's not on their maps, it's not on their network. So that is clearly where the issue is. But you're absolutely right, we need to ensure that it is on the network, so someone has clear responsibility for it, which is clearly lacking at the moment. So I've initiated that process with Sheffield City Council. It's Sheffield City Council who would initiate the process of adding bits to Amy's network. It's not something that Amy can do themselves, but I have initiated that process, and I'm currently waiting for a response from the officers on whether they will push for that bit to be added to the network. So that's where we are at the moment. It has dragged on for far too long, but it is clearly a gap in responsibility, and it does need sorting, because there are, I've just said, there are people that I've seen litter picking on there, and it is incredibly dangerous on that slip road. It's a bendy slip road, cars coming off at, you know, 50, 60, really dangerous. So it does need a professional job for litter picking, absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Lewis. Yeah. I've got another question from Dorothy. Fox Glen Park, is it? Yeah?
Yes, I am Dorothy Wishaker. I'm a member of the Friends of Fox Glen Park, which is a park on Woodroyd Road in Deep Car that for the last year, ourselves and a community group have been raising funds to get the park improved. We've managed to raise over £60,000 so far. We have three very dynamic women who are on the committee, and they've done a great job in that. However, the last, we got £10,000 to buy an infant climbing frame that the Parks Department have had for several weeks now. Initially, the Parks Department have been really, really supportive and helped us a great deal, but really since the summer, that has sort of fallen off, in fact, the spring, that's fallen off quite a lot, mainly, we presume, due to lack of staffing and possibly the weather as well. I have spoken to Ruth about it, who is aware. We were very thankful for the help the Parks Department have given us, but now we are getting a little bit despondent, that we're not getting emails replied to. We've not, we had a meeting two weeks ago on 31st of October with Sarah and Richard, and they just couldn't give us any dates for when this infant frame that they've had in their store is going to be installed. We've also asked for a map, because we've just got another £10,000 from the lottery fund, and we want to order some more things so that they can be installed for when the weather improves in spring. And Sarah said that she would do us a map of what could fit into the area, because it isn't the largest of parks, but we haven't heard anything about that yet either. Part of the problem with the grants is that you have a limited time span in which to spend them. Now, the lottery's not too bad, it's another, we've got probably about another 10 months with that, but some of the other grants that we've had for the infant frame, we're going to have to inform the funders soon, that we haven't been able to get that up yet, which is quite a concern. So we do need to know, and we also need help with what else can we fit in there?
Thank you, Dorothy. It's a continuation from the last meeting, yes. We've got, so Ruth at the back and Richard, who's Park Major. Do you want to bring it into your park, so do you want to do it now, Ruth? Just introduce yourself, Ruth, as well.
No problem. I'm Ruth Bell, Head of Parks and Countryside. We did have a chat earlier. I got these questions via a different route yesterday, and I'm getting a full set of answers, because I've had three separate questions that we do want to respond to properly. But I do want to say publicly, number one, what a fantastic job raising that much money, and number two, it's not good enough that we're not responding quickly enough and therefore making you feel despondent, so I really do apologise about that. I will get answers, including dates, for when these things can be done. The only thing that obviously was mentioned is, that's all subject to weather, and we are in the wettest period, we will only do work when we know we won't further damage a park, but I will respond with dates. I've provided my email address, so these questions could come straight to me, so that I can get you answers. And again, I'm really sorry you've not had answers as quickly as you should have. It isn't good enough, and it's not what we want you to think about parks.
Thank you, Ruth. So that ends the questions.
I'm going to run through a fairly quick and simple report. If you don't have an agenda packet and you would like one, do you want to indicate, because we've got agenda packs? The information is going to be on the slides on the screen, just to give you a bit of an update about where we are within our budget this year. So previously, we have agreed to create two new funds within our £100,000 project budget for work in line with our community plan. One was a fund called The Greatest Need, which was an opportunity for people to show us demonstrable need that they were meeting in the north, that they would ask us to support them with. And then the Big Idea Fund was more around innovation of new ideas that people would have for projects in the north. Separately, we had an additional amount of money for the cost of living, so we've also run that scheme. So we're able to update you on those things tonight. What I don't intend to do is kind of go through this line by line, because the information is within the report, but to give you an indication of the sort of things that we've agreed to do. The Greatest Need, as we expected, was to a large degree, things that were reactive in the area, as much as some of them are new, said our areas, such as support for food banks, work with young families, and some work to stimulate volunteering in the area. So those are some of the things that we've agreed through that budget. In terms of the Big Idea Fund, there were a couple of projects in there.
In terms of the Big Idea Fund, there were a couple of projects in there that were about community transport. So particularly given the size of the area and the challenges with public transport, we know that's a really hot topic. So we have a couple of our community groups who are initiating new community transport schemes. There's also work there, again, with young families. Grennyside Park, who we hoped might be able to join us tonight, but haven't been able to. There's some funding there to support them with their, their further development of what they're doing as well. And then in terms of the cost of living projects, again, this is money which, as far as we're aware in the present, may just be a one off pop that comes to the area committee, as has happened with certain other things before. So again, there's a number of things there, particularly around food banks, around welcome spaces that you may have heard of, which is supporting organisations as part of using their buildings to make sure that that's an open and a welcome space for people. We're pleased to see that through, through this funding, there's been a couple of new welcome space, kind of open sessions that have been initiated, one very near to us by the Equator and Montanetara, one in Stanington Library. So again, a number of different projects there to support people within this financial year with cost of living issues. So in terms of the remainder of the budget for this year, which has yet to be allocated, just as a reminder that within that hundred thousand pound budget, anything above five thousand pounds comes to this meeting, anything below is delegated to me as the manager in conjunction with the chair. So in terms of that Big Idea Fund, that sort of innovation fund, we were not able to fund all of the requests. We thought there were some really good projects that came forward and so we are proposing and recommending tonight to the committee that we run another round of that fund because that's shown us that there are good ideas out there. In terms of some folk who weren't able to be funded through the greatest need fund, as you've seen, there was a separate cost of living fund. So felt that that was a good use for some of the unspent funds within our annual budget. So that's a recommendation. And then in terms of that delegation that I mentioned before, part of the stipulation around the delegation is to bring that back to you. So there's a list there and obviously it's within your report pack as well, that's some of the things that we have done. So we've heard about Fox Glen tonight, for example, supporting them with the installation of another piece of equipment, some quite practical things there. Sometimes where we run a fund and the applications have just been over the level of the funding that we've had, then we've topped that up with, with the wider budget as well. So that's really just an update as a summary. That shows you that we have currently fifteen thousand pounds left to allocate within this financial year, but the recommendation, Chair, is that we run a second round of the Big Idea Fund.
Thank you, Dave. Like to thank Dave for the work that we've got all these projects on, on the go funded. And thanks to Theresa and Izzy at the back there for, for helping along. It's been a pretty big task and not Mark now to do it, but pretty big task to get, get them all done. And we've managed to satisfy almost everything and everybody. And again, we, we've got another, another round of grants to, to go along. It's really good as well that we've got not only the usual customers that come along the groups, but some new groups this time, which is really encouraging. So item agenda number eight is the...
Just to take that to...
Sorry. Sorry, yeah. If you could agree that to colleagues, yeah. Thank you very much. Please spend it, thank you. So it's Parish Council update, so we can start with Stockbridge. Mark, got anything?
Well, it continues to be dynamic and competent. It's, thank you. It's fully functioning with all, all council positions filled and I haven't prepared a specific report, but it is functioning very well indeed on behalf of the community.
Thank you, Mark, thank you. Is anyone from Bradfield, Parish Council now? So move on to Ecclesfield then.
I'm just saying the custom as I am to public speaking, but you know, that's not true. Okay, I've just got a few bullet points to go through here. I'm not getting, you're not getting too much of an echo, okay? So, so far, we've distributed over seventy winter warmth packs to vulnerable people in the parish. We've improved all the parish council owned benches. Internal auditor, sorry, the internal auditor has given the parish councils financial and governance policies and procedures a clean bill of health. And it's been something I think that the parish people have been there along the meetings being worked on to get it to the top grading that we can. Delivered a successful community cleanup day in Thorncliffe. Progressing preparation for local commemorations for the eightieth anniversary of the D-Day landings. Doesn't seem that long since we were having the seventy fifth, does it? Continue to give much needed grants to local community groups and organisations. I think some of that, as you've been covered by Dave Lux's report on some of the stuff that's been going in the greatest need. And progressing a meeting with South Yorkshire Mayor about bus service provision in the parish. I think bus services are going to come again and again. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Adam. Do you want to add anything, Andrew? No? And right to number nine, which is Parks update. Over to you, Ruth.
You want to come to the front some, Alan?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Can't see it. Thank you. I'm hoping I can stand up and do this. Can you all hear me? And is it okay for your sound? Brilliant. I very boldly said that I'll move my slides on myself. That might go horribly wrong and I might have to revert back to, to Alan. So if you don't mind bearing with me. First of all, thank you very much for the invite to, to come here. We, the Parks and Countryside Service, have been invited to a few lack meetings now and we've got a few more to come. And it's really nice to come and do a bit of an overview, a bit of a, this is who we are, this is what we do and this is what is going on in, in your area. Because often what we have is, is individual interactions with people or groups about specific projects, rather than being able to, to talk about everything that's going on, a little bit in the city and then a little bit in your area. So I'm really grateful. What I would say is, our area managers, I'm, I'm joined by Rich Dewsbury, who you might all know today, our area managers do often attend these meetings, but if there is anything that you want to specifically hear about from Parks and Countryside, please do ask because we're very happy to come. We have had some lacks who have asked us to come and do specific presentations on environment or the biodiversity net gain type stuff. We're happy to come and talk about anything you want to hear about. This is just a fairly generic presentation, so it's just a bit of a, this is what's going on in the north and this is what we hope is going to come. But if you want to hear about anything specific, please just, just shout up. Right, here we go. Oh, it didn't work. Can I just say next slide, Alan? Is that all right? Thank you. And we, we always start with this slide when we do a presentation to a group that we've not spoken to before, because often people know what is in their local area and then they have a bit of an idea about the big things in the city, so the big parks, but they don't necessarily know everything that we do. We are a Parks and Countryside Service. People sometimes think that what we do is really traditional parks, so, so areas that have very closely mown grass and things like that. Actually, we're a really varied service, doing an awful lot across the entire city. We, we run a number of city parks, which you will all be familiar with. It's, it's the parks that, that, that you might travel to visit. So, so your Graves Park, your Hillsborough Park, your, I was going to say Botanical Gardens, but, but that is actually slightly different, as you'll, as you'll see it listed. And then we have district parks, which are smaller, then local parks, which are smaller still. And when you add up all of our spaces, we, we actually manage about eight hundred spaces across the city and they really vary from a really small area of, of often just, just grass that, that would only be important to the few people that live very close to it, right up to those parks that people will travel across the city to visit and often from other places as well. Graves Park is an example from that. We know a lot of people visit from Chesterfield, they do come from outside of the city boundaries. We have about a hundred and fifty playgrounds. I've got a four and a half year old, so I honestly feel like in the last three and a half years since, since lockdown ended, I've visited all of them. They're brilliant, they're of varying sizes and of varying ages. We are progressing through from the toddler stage up into the more scary stuff, I've got to be honest. We also do woodlands and countryside sites, so it isn't just parks. If you think about where there are, where there are woodlands, the Ecclesall Discovery Centre, those things all fall within our service as well and people often don't know that. They think we just do parks and we, we don't. We actually do your very traditional parks, right the way through to your really quite wild sites, which is, is, is a really nice place to work. It means that we do, we almost do everything that's green across the city, which is, it's a really great place to work and it's, it's really nice doing that, that varied mix that hits almost every need in the city. We also do a few things that people don't necessarily think sit within parks, allotments. I've actually got a bit of a slide on allotments, so I will come on to that because obviously there are allotments in your area. Closed burial grounds. When a church closes a burial ground, responsibility for that is sometimes passed to the local authority. We manage twenty one of those. We do not manage bereavement and cemetery sites, that's a different part of the council, but those closed burial sites do sit with us, so that's a little bit of an oddity and something that people often don't know. Sports facilities, obviously there are quite a lot of those in parks and we manage those along with our, our colleagues, so here from, from Sports and Leisure, who are going to talk to you about playgrounds later. And then some quite strange things, boating facilities, we, we run one, we've got some fishing facilities and we do have one pitch and putt course as well. So we really do a lot of different things. And if it's in the boundaries of Sheffield and it's a green space, odds are it's us. Not always, but odds are it's us. Then this is what we call the Slide of Doom. We, we do always follow that, this is what we manage with, this is how much we've got. And I don't want to spend a lot of time on it, but I do think it is, it is important to recognise that along with most other council services throughout austerity and since we have seen significant budget cuts, what we do and the things that we're asked to do hasn't reduced, but the amount of money that we have to do it has reduced. We, we've got the, the arrow going down, we're showing how our budget has gone down. We did play around with the idea of having the, the income generation arrow going up, but it's a bit difficult to represent because we, we don't necessarily have, have very consistent early figures. But the big message there is currently our income has not expanded to fill the gap that has been taken away budget wise. I do hope that one day it will and some cities are managing that, but it, but it hasn't for us. So we are trying to do, if not the same, then more with less money. And, and I know that, that the people of Sheffield do feel the impact of that and, and I'm not going to excuse us not responding to emails and things like that, but the example given from our colleagues in, in Fox Glen, we're, we're trying to do more with less. We're not always getting it right. I hope we're getting more right than we're getting wrong. We are still very enthusiastic about doing things and one of the things that we have done as our budgets have gone down is, is looked to other sources of money. And colleagues from Fox Glen just said that they'd, they'd raised sixty thousand pounds. That's not council funding, that's money that they've sought from elsewhere to improve their local facilities. So we do quite a lot of that and work with groups. And the really key thing is, one of the ways that our green spaces have stayed open and I think stayed beautiful and accessible and enjoyable and on doorsteps, is other people do a lot in our green spaces. It absolutely is not all the Parks and Countryside Service. If, if it were just us doing it, it wouldn't be the way it is. We have friends groups across the city who are doing such a fantastic job. They're doing things that we don't do, they're doing things that we can't afford to do. They're fundraising and they're, they're talking to us about what their local space needs and, and it's just absolutely invaluable. Next slide, please. One of the things that, that we're feeling alongside that, that actual physical budget reduction is the, the, the places where costs are going up and there's, there's lots of these, there's lots of these things. And these, these are fairly generic pictures, these aren't necessarily pictures in the north. In fact, some of them you'll recognise are not the north, that's the Botanical Gardens in the top left. But the, the challenges are felt across the city, literally in every single area. Antisocial behaviour, wish it wasn't an issue, but it is. It's, it's an issue and it's a cost to us and the cost is going up. Floral expectations, so everything is getting a little bit more expensive. You might have noticed any planting that we do in your areas has probably reduced at least a little bit, but we, we do need to keep doing some stuff and we're trying to do it as cheaply as we can. We're also trying to change the way that we do things. So rather than having very formal planted areas in some places, obviously not the Botanical Gardens, which is a bit of a different beast, but we're trying to look at how we can do things at a different cost, but also meet the biodiversity challenges across the city. So we're trying to do different things and also save money at the same time. Facilities management and popularity really come together. I, I don't know whether any of you discovered any of your local spaces during Covid, but thousands of people across the city did. You probably all saw the headlines, which were specifically focused on Encliff Park, where we had to remove, I feel like it was three and a half elephants worth of, of litter every single day during that period after the first lockdown ended, when everybody flocked to their local parks and people went to places that they hadn't been to before, which is absolutely brilliant. Obviously, some of that has tailed off, but we have seen that people continue to be engaged with our sites in a way that they weren't before. In addition to more people going to our sites, we've got people talking to us, more people wanting to engage with us in different ways and, and more groups springing up. I don't think I've got the figure on, on these slides, but pre-Covid, we had about eighty five friends groups across the city. Post-Covid, that's jumped up to over a hundred. So that's, that's twenty additional groups who want to work with us in their local site. They want to make sure that we're doing what we should be doing, that, that the site meets local needs and, and that it's a space that they want to go to. Absolutely brilliant. Obviously, none of it comes at zero cost, but, but a really great thing to see that we're just trying to, trying to meet the financial challenge of. I won't spend too long talking about diseases, but I think that's a bit of a strange way of phrasing it, isn't it? What I largely mean there is tree disease. You may well have heard of ash dieback and I'm going to throw a bit of a technical one out at you, phytophthora. I can't spell it, but I can say it. Just a couple of the diseases that we're dealing with across the city that are costing us a lot of money. Ash dieback, we have to take trees down at a certain point because they become unsafe. Phytophthora, we get, we get requests, well, we get, we get demands to sell trees from the Environment Agency, from Forestry Commission, sorry. And we have to sell certain trees and trees within a certain boundary, within a certain timescale. None of that is externally funded, government doesn't fund that. We have to do it from within our, our existing budgets and that's very, very difficult. Staff and machinery, all costs are going up. We are trying to do things different and by different, I do largely mean better. We are trying to respond to the nature emergency that was declared in Sheffield a couple of years ago. Doing things differently is, is great. It is the direction of travel, it is where we absolutely need to be, but it, it doesn't come at zero cost. If you need a different type of machine doing a different thing, that often comes with increased costs. You may well get that money back in future years, but it comes with an immediate cost. All of that, very important and absolutely not saying we shouldn't do it, it's just one of the many challenges. And it's one of the challenges that isn't necessarily seen, it's, it's just the stuff that we need to do. And then flight, that goes along with, with the antisocial behaviour, flight, ipin and graffiti, both of which are increasing a little bit in, in certain areas of the city and are just simply costing us more money. And I don't know whether any of you are familiar with the Sheffield Standard, but you'll be aware, I'm sure, that there is one green flag in the north of the city. We, Sheffield City Council, we have a Sheffield Standard, that's what we call it. We, we have a way of looking at and assessing sites in the city to see whether or not they meet the standard we would expect. We call it the Sheffield Standard and what it does is it takes a smaller number of those green flag conditions and we look at the site and we apply those things and see whether it passes or fails the Sheffield Standard. It was quite a while ago that those standards were come up, were developed and we are talking about how we reassess those because actually I think there's a few things that they don't do. And if you look at the green flag now, they, they require more information about how you're responding to the likes of the nature emergency and have different interactions with friends groups. So we are looking at reviewing that. But as a bit of a benchmark, this shows you, if you look at each of the lack areas, how many of the sites, what percentage of the sites meet that standard and how many do we class as not meeting that standard? In the south west, all of them meet it. In central, they all meet it, that's probably not a surprise, there aren't nearly as many sites in the, in, in central. And then if you look at, look at the north, it's, it's the next best place. So we say about seventy eight percent of, of sites are meeting that Sheffield Standard with those current standards applied, that is, and about twenty one percent not meeting. and about 21% not meeting that standard. We want that to be 100% for all areas and we are working towards that goal. I don't know what was changing those criteria will do. I don't imagine it will push those numbers up, just to say we're not doing it to push those numbers up. It might be that some of those numbers drop as we look at what are the right standards to apply. But just as a bit of a benchmark as to how you compare to other lacks, that's where we are currently. This is the area and this is, green is passing, red is failing, yellow is in between the two. The big thing to say about the North, of course, is that you're a very, very, very large area, but with most of our sites concentrated to the east of the area. But we do have a mix, but we have too many reds. We need to get that number down from 21% failing down to 0% failing. There are 127 recreation sites across the North. There is one green flag in this area, which is Weetawards. I don't know whether any of you knew that. We do have a number of parks that have got plans for capital improvement. Just to say on this presentation, it's a big area, there are 127 sites. So I'm doing a little bit of a skim over the top. So if your site isn't mentioned and you're concerned about it, number one, grab me. But number two, please, please don't worry about it. This is just a really quick, I was given 10 minutes by Dave and I said, no, no, it's going to be 20. And I thought, horrible feeling, there was 25. But yes, a number of parks in this area where we are looking to make improvements over the next few years. We've talked about a number of them already today. So Ecclesfield Park, Fox Glen, Oxley Park, which is part of the Towns Fund funding, Sycamore Park in Worrell, the Rookerate, Wodley Park Village and Cross Lane. This refers back to my point that we don't do it alone. We don't and can't do it alone. A lot of the things that are happening in the area are happening thanks to volunteers. So just a bit of a, this is what's happening in the North. Between April and September this year, there were 437 hours of volunteers working on those sites within the North. If you imagine that, if you compare that to council staff, that's several council staff working every single week, a standard week. So we really could not do it alone. If we didn't have those people, I don't think the sites would look as good, I don't think they would feel as nice. So we're incredibly grateful to those people who do a real range of things, from planting and tree planting and looking after our trees, right the way through to clearing things and managing our meadows. So that's not an exclusive list of sites that they work on, but that's five examples of the sites where we get regular volunteers going and spending their own personal time supporting us to do our work, supporting you guys on those sites that you all love to visit. And I mentioned that there was an allotment slide. This is just a little bit of information. Like I said, we manage allotments. Allotments have been spoken about recently in our committee. We had the decision about rents for not next year, but the year after. And we did have conversations about allotments in general, the waiting lists that we have, the fact that our waiting lists are quite long in some areas and at least a little bit long in all other areas. There's no areas without any waiting lists. We do need to work out what our answer is to that. Where do we need additional sites? Is there land in those areas that we can turn into an allotment site? Because we do know that people do want to get involved in food growing and we're the service that can support that. So there are 11 sites within the North with 198 plots, although five of those plots are unlettable. And they're deemed unlettable in the sense that it isn't financially worth it to bring them back into use. It would take so much, so much work and so much money that it's unaffordable at the moment to bring those five plots back into use. And the waiting list is almost as big as the number of plots that there are in the North. That won't be evenly spread. There will be some sites with long waiting lists and some sites with shortish waiting lists. But yeah, currently the waiting list is as long as the number of plots. So everybody in the North would have to give up their allotment plot to fulfil the current allotment demand. The allotment sites in this part of the city are no different to the rest of the city. That's probably not a big surprise, but everything's costing a little bit more. Allotment rents are, we believe, quite reasonable in the city and we have a very generous, very widely used discount scheme for anybody that is able to claim certain benefits. They're able to get a discount on the price they pay for their allotment. Inflation being as high as it is means that we haven't increased our fees in line with inflation for, I was going to say last year, but actually what I mean is for the year that's coming and we won't be increasing it by inflation for the year that's coming. Those things shrink the budget slightly, so I mean that we can do slightly less with regard to site improvements. So we are seeing a bit of an impact there. And then antisocial behaviour, that's an issue across the city in varying degrees and in varying ways, but it is an issue in the North like it is everywhere else. Normally, I'd bring one of my colleagues who gets to do the fun part of this presentation, which is to talk you through the pictures very briefly and the things that are going on. But I get to do it today, which is a bit of a treat. I will do it very quickly because I'll be honest, I'm not going to do it as much justice as some of my colleagues would because they've been actually involved in the project and they know it inside and out and undoubtedly know you guys as well. So Ecclesfield, playground renewal has been delivered and there's more to come. Really exciting things happening in Ecclesfield. Tennis court renewal, that's ongoing. There are some naturalisation projects. The path network is being looked at and is being improved. And I won't steal the thunder of my colleagues about play zones because they're going to talk to you about that. But there has been a submission of an application for a play zone in Ecclesfield. Oxley Park, a new whole woods improvement. Obviously, we said that this was part of the Towns Fund money. So the access improvements are well underway and then there are a number of things that are coming. So a couple of the key things are vehicle charging and also the wheels park facility, which I believe is still being worked out, but we're hoping that that will happen in the spring. And then future projects and priorities, again, just to be really clear, this is not everything. It's what we could fit on one slide because I didn't want to talk for three hours. But some future priorities, improving site quality and that's making sure that all the sites are meeting the standard and also re-establishing what that standard might be. Looking at recreational community facility renewal, Stannington Park Pavilion. I know that an application has been put in for YIF, which is youth, oh, is it youth investment or youth involvement? Youth investment funding, thank you, Councilwoman. I don't have an update on that, I'm afraid that one is ongoing. And then looking at the play and recreational facilities, looking at where there is a need for replacement or refurbishment and what we can do, what we can afford to do, what we can improve and how we can also make the maintenance of those sites easier. Making our sites more accessible and inclusive, this is really important across the city and it's something we really are prioritising. There are a lot of our parks and in particular our playgrounds where if you have certain access requirements, you can't use them. We've got a lot of very standard equipment and we're trying to change that where we possibly can. Some of it is relatively easy. The slide to the left, sorry, the swing to the left is something that we're doing wherever we can. So changing what would be a standard swing for one person sitting to a swing where somebody that needs to be held up within the seats a little bit and also would need somebody to swing with them to give them access to playgrounds in a way that they might not have had before. That's a fairly quick and easy win. Other things are harder, you need more space, but we need to make sure that everybody that wants to play in our playgrounds can play no matter the requirements that they have. And then also a really important one in responding to the nature emergency and future biodiversity requirements, we want to make sure that our sites are doing what they can for nature. So often people think of the relaxed mowing areas, which we have across the city now. We've expanded over the last couple of years, but actually we are going to be looking at more detailed things. Habitats, improvements, where can we improve things on a site? Not in exchange for people being able to access the site, but how can we make a site do more? So in addition to allowing people to go in, play, spend time there, sit and have picnics, play football, do whatever it is that they want to do in a park, how can we make it better for nature as well?
Adam, yeah. Adam. Right, I don't usually need a microphone, actually. Yeah, you mentioned about antisocial behaviour and you also mentioned that it's not just the local park you're responsible for. And thinking particularly on the outskirts of the North, a lot of our country parks, off-road biking and those sorts of nuisances. I'm not sure there is a solution, but what you're doing about it and how we're trying to improve it, because it's been a problem ever since I've been involved in local politics. Thank you.
I wish there was a solution. I wish I could say we're doing this and this will solve the problem. You're absolutely right, there isn't a single solution to it. What we're doing is responding, working with our colleagues in the police, looking at where people are going, how are they getting in? It is actually a really difficult one. Often where we've got particularly off-road bikes accessing parks, the easy answer is to put some kind of restriction on to the park to prevent them getting in. But actually, that prevents a lot of other people getting in the park. So what we're trying to do is respond almost on a case by case basis. What is the problem in that park and how can we solve it? What does the local community need? It is a very difficult one. Off-road bikes is a problem in a number of sites across the North. I don't have an answer. Do you mind if I take that away? Because I don't know the answer, actually. I don't know the answer and I don't know whether it's something that has been looked at by the Parks and Countryside Service, but let me take that away and come up with an answer. It may not be a quick answer because the quick answer would probably be no. But actually, if we're going to explore it, that might take a bit of time. What can we do? Who else has done it? Where have they done it successfully and things like that?
Yeah, Robert Marson from Friends of Ecclesfield Park. People ask me about, keep saying to me, there's not enough seating in the play area. In the play area, yes. We provided, the community garden provided three benches in the park last year and some litter bins.
Let me look into it. As a weary parent who has to stand next to a swing for 20 minutes, I understand. I don't know how many benches there are, but I'll have a look and see if there's anything that we can do.
Yeah. On the other thorny thing, my wife was Chair of Ecclesfield, Friends of Ecclesfield Park. She died in nineteen, about a few, five years ago. I was looking through her files today. Another thing was on the top of it in big letters, what happened to the money from the pavilion? I'll tell you, it was £104,000.
I don't know. I don't know is the answer. The money from the pavilion, is it when the pavilion burned down?
It would burn down, yes.
I don't know, let me come back to you.
Yeah.
I haven't got it, by the way, I haven't got the money.
Thank you, Chair. Can I just say, that was a real tour de force. Yeah, carrying all that in your head is a difficulty. I've got a couple of questions and it may well be that you're not the right person to answer them. But in any event, it may well be something that the committee would want to bring back a report on anyway. Because I think, I mean, I was very drawn by the map. I know the work that you do and I know the areas that you're involved with. And I'm drawing now on my background and experience. A third of the city is actually in the Peak District National Park. And so my first question really is, to what extent do your activities, Parks and Countryside activities, connect with the National Park Authority to address the issues that occur in Sheffield's part of the National Park? So the trashed areas of bridleways and footpaths and the like. These things are always compartmentised and it may well be some other bit of the council that's responsible for some of that. But the net result as far as public's concerned is we see it as part of Sheffield and lamentably, it's not necessarily in a good state. I mean, I'm reminded of the comments that were made earlier on about the slip road onto the bypass. Some of these places seem to fall between two stools. So the question really to you or to Sheffield is, how do the National Park and Sheffield work together to deal with those areas in the North of Sheffield particularly that need addressing and not actually parks and specified bits of woodland and whatever? The second thing is related to this as well and it's the North again. You will know that over the last five years or so, Sheffield Wildlife Trust and its partners, which includes Sheffield City Council, have got, I think, £3.2 million of Heritage Lottery Fund, which has been invested in all sorts of things in the North of Sheffield. Now, that project comes to a close really next spring. It was extended because of Covid and the like, but the money's all spent. But the city and the Wildlife Trust and the other partners, Yorkshire Water, for example, have a 10-year forward plan. I'm really keen to know, and I think actually the North Area Panel people, the population, people here and the people that might be listening to this broadcast would be interested to know just exactly how Sheffield City Council, as part of that forward going partnership, is going to invest in those parts of the North that are not, again, the park sites and woodland, but for which you are a partner with the other major people. There's a real opportunity out there. The budgets are going down, I know, but the experience of the partnership for the Sheffield Lakeland Trust work has shown just how much there is in terms of volunteer interest and particularly hard to reach communities. And I think that we should be doing a lot more and through vehicles like this meeting to publicise what people are trying to do, what the council's trying to do and open up the opportunities for people. So it's a bit convoluted, Chair, but two questions really. How does the council work with the National Park in our area? And what are your thoughts about the working, the ongoing working partnership that's going to be with the Lakeland Project in the North of Sheffield? Two vital areas for the communities here. Thank you.
I think I need to be honest and say, I probably can't do either of those questions justice in this meeting. And my recommendation about the second one would be perhaps that we have a conversation about it later. If there are any plans for any kind of environmental conversation, colleagues from the Sheffield River and Wildlife Trust and Green Estate and Simon, actually, would happily come and talk about how we do things and what plans are beyond the current funding. It is an example, similar to the volunteer one, of the fact that Sheffield City Council and Parks and Countryside can't and don't do it all. Actually, we have a number of partners managing land on our behalf, doing a fantastic job and working partnership on a number of those sites. So I don't think I can do your second question justice. And I think perhaps if it's something that colleagues are interested in, we could talk about further. The Central Lack had a conversation on critically environmental matters and Simon came. I attended along with colleagues from Green Estate and from the Sheffield River and Wildlife Trust. So if you're interested in that, please do let me know. On your first question, what I would say is we have very, very strong links with the Peak National Park. And actually, a number of those sites that fall within the Peak Boundary aren't necessarily managed by us. They're managed by colleagues or by partnerships. And they have the same challenges that we have budget wise, but we try and do the best that we can in the area. We also, in Parks and Countryside, you may not be aware of this, but the public rights of waiting, which is exceptionally small, and by small, I mean currently one person recently moved into Parks and Countryside because we all recognise that, it's exactly like you say, that there are lots of things that are green spaces that aren't the things that people think are parks. And if we've got other bits of the council doing... And if we've got other bits of the council doing it in isolation, it's not necessarily the best thing to do. So we do have, we do have the Countryside Team, which includes the tree team and the woodlands team, and people managing those non-traditional park sites within Parks and Countryside. So we do have an overview of it all, and public rights of way are a part of that. Do we always get it right? No? Are we trying very hard? Yes, I really hope so. If you want to talk further about how we're looking at those sites and where the lines are, where we're not getting it right, please let me know. My email address for anybody that's interested is ruth.bell@sheffield.gov.uk. So any questions that you might have, any questions I haven't answered fully, if you want to get in touch with me, we can have a conversation about it. Is that okay?
Very important, Chair. I think there's an opportunity. I think there's an opportunity there for a report by, from yourselves, on what's happening going forward. It's really important. Cheers.
As it happens, three of the councillors here are on the Committee's Parks and Leisure Board, Committee Board, so Richard's Chair. We've already had a briefing on the Lakeland, Sheffield Lakeland Project here, so probably needs to talk to you afterwards, trouble. As regards the, yeah, actually, as regards the benches and chairs in Ettlesfield Park, perhaps may need to speak with other local councillors, East Ettlesfield and the Parish Council regarding. Have you got any, the children's benches? Because there's two, there's children's benches and then the adult benches, yeah.
There's plenty of seats in the park.
Yeah.
It's just a new play area, there's not enough seats.
Is there any at all? Is there any at all?
Yes.
And are they adult?
Yes.
Yeah, perhaps a couple of the children's ones are good as well.
Yeah, it does need more.
Yeah, okay.
You were saying, last Saturday, people were saying to me, there's not enough seats.
We'll talk to you afterwards. Perhaps Alan will talk to you afterwards.
Yeah.
Richard?
Thank you, thank you, Chair. Just to follow up on your second question for everyone. Yeah, the Sheffield Lakeland Partnership was an excellent project coming to an end. It has been extended. I went along to a presentation where they reflected on the 10 years, and I know you were there because you were sat next to me. I think it would be a really good topic to bring to one of these LAC meetings, a summary of what it's achieved and what the aspirations are. And it would be a real shame if it fades out, because it's done so much.
I think it affects both those of the north and the north-west Committee as well.
But can we have it here first?
Yeah, thank you. Was I mistaken that you said there's got to be vehicle charging at Oxley Park? There is going to be. Can I ask why?
I don't have an answer, but I can get you an answer. It's part of the master plan.
Who's master plan? Is that the Towns Fund or? Yeah. Because I'm very concerned that there's a high level of poverty in Stockbridge and Deep Car. And people who can't afford or there isn't suitable transport to get to other areas are just not going to be able to afford in car parks, which will end up, if they have a car, parking on the streets or having to walk up vast hills, push and push chairs and things like that, because there's not enough transport. It just doesn't seem quite right to me to be charging for there.
Right. Thank you for listening, Stodd. We're not charging, it's not talking about charging in the car park, it's electric vehicle charging, so charging your electric vehicle.
You!
I will change that in the presentation, apologies, yes. EV charging, electric vehicle charging.
Yeah, that's a relief. Thank you.
Thanks, thanks very much, Ruth. Thank you. Josh, can I see you? Yeah, if you want to come to the front, yeah. Introduce yourselves, yeah.
I'm consultant, sure.
It's an update on the Play Zone Project, which is, there's two hopefully going ahead. One in Ettlesfield Park and one in Jubling Sports on Clewell's Lane, both in the north of Sheffield. And I think we've got some progress, haven't we?
Yes, yes. It's nice to see everyone. I'll apologise in advance, I'm not standing, I haven't got my contacts in, so I won't be able to see my screen if I stand up. I'm Josh Blunkett, this is my colleague, Theo Currie, we're project officers in the Sport, Leisure and Events Team. And we're just going to give a bit of a brief update on the Play Zones Programme that we've been working on. So the Play Zones Programme is something that is quite in its infancy. It's looking at developing outdoor sports facilities, and it's funded by the Football Foundation, which is a collaborative approach from the FA, the Premier League and the government as well. The overall aim is to just increase physical activity and recreational sport in play to get people more active within their local community. And one of the ways that they're doing this is looking at improved multi-use games areas than the traditional model that you might see in parks currently. So we've been through a thorough site identification process to look at where these could possibly fit best, and what area might benefit from the first phase of submission. And one of those places, Ettlesfield Park, for a number of different reasons, we're happy to follow Ruth, because she's already mentioned about some of the kind of wider developments that have happened in Ettlesfield Park, as well as the consultation that happened in 2021 through parks, that detail that the current multi-use games area on site is in need of improvement. There isn't a lot of usage currently because of the kind of low quality of that space, and that there is a demand for something within the local area, and that in order to get active, a lot of people are having to actually travel outside of the Ettlesfield area to places such as Concord and Fawncliff, to maybe access some of that outdoor sport facility to get active. So following that, through July to September, we started a consultation process to gather as much community engagement as possible. This is to spread awareness about what a play zone could look like. So just to give you a little bit of background about the criteria around a play zone, the Football Foundation have done some significant research into how these areas are commonly not used, and that in order to increase usage, they've put some criteria in place. So this includes having floodlights as part of any development, just to enable year-round usage, enable, having high-quality surfacing, just to enable that kind of high-quality play, as well as inspire people to get more active at those nice spaces. Having a seating or viewing area to enable that social element. Having an activation plan alongside to make sure that we're not just building these things, but also that people and the community are at the heart of everything that we are planning, and that there is a lot of opportunity for people to become active at that space. So that's working with community organisations and other physical activity providers, as well as wider, and see what opportunities they could offer. And then there has to be a mixed-use approach. So there'll be an element of free-to-use time, where people can just rock up and play however they like, an element of private paid-for bookings, to enable some of that activation to occur, so that people can secure that space and be able to offer that out. And then activity session bookings, so a community organisation might run a turn-up-and-play football session where there's a coach, and there's some oversight of that where people can get involved. So from that, the community engagement, and hopefully Theo's handed out quite a lot, so I won't go into too much detail. Oh, there's one at the back. Well, we can share it afterwards. We've also got a slightly larger report that we're close to finalising as well, that kind of details the entire journey from the expression of interest all the way up to today. But we essentially wanted to get the community's thoughts on whether a play zone would be welcome in Ettlesfield, where it would be best. The proposal that we had is that next to the tennis court developments, there is a concreted area that isn't currently earmarked for any development. So with everything nice in the park currently, and all the kind of nice playground and everything like that, that area's kind of left at the moment. So we've been working with Parks and Countryside, quite a lot to say, this is an ideal space for a play zone. And then to look at how this could benefit the community, so whether it's welcomed, whether it would be beneficial, and if so, what design aspects and how we could make that inclusive and accessible for as many people as possible. So we did that community engagement through quite a few different areas, a lot of it through an online survey, also a lot of targeted outreach, speaking to over 80 local organisations within Ettlesfield and surrounding. Lots of site presence, speaking to people within the park through neighbouring houses to gather their feedback and try and collect as many voices as we can. There's also been some targeted outreach, both from a local perspective and citywide, around certain key target groups, which the programme is aimed at, making sure that these are inclusive spaces, and that is women and girls, ethnically diverse communities, those from lower socio-economic backgrounds, and...
Which ones, I think, Stodd?
I was hoping, I think we do those socio-economic.
Those with disabilities and long-term health conditions as well. Sorry, I say that often, I should know it right now. Just to get a representative view of the community. From that, we've had a lot of response, over 150 responses on the online survey, as well as over 200 in-person kind of discussions, collection of feedback that we recorded as well. And through that, we've generated this infographic that shows kind of the consensus around those key different themes. Overall, and again, hopefully you can have a look through this and kind of find out everything, these bits on there, from the design elements to how it could be used, all the way up to what activation would people want to see, and how people could be encouraged to be more active within the Ettlesfield area. But overall, there is a lot of support for a play zone, and this kind of does really give us the confidence to progress. So now that we've got that information, we're looking to submit a full application to the Football Foundation for Ettlesfield Park to be a site to be submitted, hopefully by the end of the year, any time now really. Once we've submitted that, subject to funding, we'll then be able to start feasibility work and hopefully have things progress early next year and onwards. So that's a very quick overview, and hopefully, once you get to see the report and everything, that'll give a much more deeper understanding of kind of the last year's work of work. But we're happy to take any questions now, or if anybody would like to send one through, we'll have to provide our email addresses, and we can follow up with written responses.
Yes, thanks, Josh. Yeah, thank you very much. I think we're very lucky in the north, and especially Ettlesfield Park, to have this pilot. It's first in the sort of country, isn't it? They've gone around the country in various places.
Yes.
I think it'll be really good. It'll be useful for adult booking and then for regular booking, for, hopefully for groups and schools and whatever, yeah.
Yeah, it is a kind of updated model that you wouldn't traditionally see in the multi-use games area, and this project is quite new. So there's hopefully going to be lots of these popping up up and around the country. But we really wanted to make sure it's right for Sheffield, and especially the different areas that we're looking at. So if we're successful with the submission, there will be a period of evaluation going forward as well, to make sure that it is as successful and beneficial as we want it to be, to see how the activation could work. And we want to continue working with that to make sure it does achieve what we want. So yeah, lots of learning to take, hopefully if we are successful. But with the feedback that we've collected so far, I'm quite confident that it will be a really good addition to the Ettlesfield area.
Andrew Talson, Plough, to the parish council, a to welcome it, but b, just what's happening with basketball provision? You probably guess why I'm asking that, because there's a number of people very keen to see basketball provision, not so the parish council, but people we represent, yes?
Yes. So yes, in terms of the feedback, basketball came out, I think, second highest priority for the area, in which it is a multi-sport offer, so we would be looking to include basketball as part of that design going forward. We've also engaged with national governing body in basketball, as well as different community groups who said they would be able to offer basketball provision as part of a play zone development in Ettlesfield, so quite comfortable that we'd be able to create more opportunity in that area going forward.
Just on that, it'll be a joint provision, so the current multi-use games area has got basketball there. Obviously aware that, I'm picking up there, aware that it isn't as good or higher quality as we'd hoped, so we're hoping that any income that's generated from the play zone that's in the surplus, we could put into regenerating the current multi-use games area that's already there. So then you've got two higher-quality spaces in one park, so that's a hope. So yes, as much as we're moving forward with the basketball offer for this play zone, we're hoping to also improve the provision that's also on the site already, and pair that with activation work through, like Josh said, NGB partners.
Okay, thanks, Chair. Just a quick one, I know you mentioned, and I do get, the floodlights. I know once when we actually developed a skate park in Angrim Bank, one of the recommendations was we needed to be a little bit careful about floodlights, because that can actually increase, believe it or not, could increase antisocial behaviour. So how will you be policing and managing, and I suppose funding the floodlights? I mean, would it be, if you've got it for a paid session, you'd have to pay for them? And which is wondering how you're going to manage that potential conflict around the floodlighting? Thank you.
So as this is a brand-new project, we are figuring things out as we go, but we are aware that that is a potential risk. So before we even start, we're going to have to do some surveys to make sure we aren't bats in the area and the lights, so we're keeping absolutely everybody happy. But as well as that, as we understand the model as it works, is that you would book onto it, or if it's free to play, then when you go on, the lights turn on. So only if you're actually attending a session, or if you've booked to hire it, then with the lights would turn on, so they wouldn't be on all the time. It's also just a massive waste of energy. So we're trying to do what we can, where we can, to not only keep the bats happy, prevent antisocial behaviour, but also save costs where we're going. So that's kind of a multi-tiered approach, but as we learn more, we'll be able to report back.
So floodlighting would be available, but not on all the time is probably the way you're going.
Yes, say you book to a session between seven and nine, when you put your coat in and you go through the gate, the floodlights will turn on, and when you leave, they should turn off. Should, because we don't actually have one yet, so we will find out as things go on.
Yeah, just to add to that as well, as part of the activation plan, we're looking at, looking at those different times where there's preferred usage and in what method, so whether it would be for private booking or attending a session, or whether it would just be recreational play. But we're hoping to piece that together where the activation, there would be some management staff from community organisations or local organisations on site as well, which would hopefully reduce the risk of antisocial behaviour.
Thank you, Chair. I was going to pick up on that point, Adam, in terms of the floodlights, because we're having huge problems in my ward at the moment, trying to find somewhere for a 2G pitch that doesn't have bats, and it's causing us a problem. So yeah, as long as you've got the sort of the bat survey and the ecology report and everything, I'm sure you'll be fine, because it does sound like a really exciting project, and I think we'll all be watching it with some great interest. I think a couple of things for me, Sheffield Sharks, I don't know if you've been in contact with them, they do loads of good community and outreach work, so if you're basketball, they would definitely certainly be worth picking up, mate. And in terms of the design of the whole thing, there are experts who will come along and will consistently design and out crime, just picking up on your point, Adam, to make sure that when the thing is designed, it's designed thoughtfully and carefully, so that it is difficult to actually commit crime and antisocial behaviour in it. There are experts who can do that stuff, and I'm sure that will be picked up as part of the work that's ongoing.
Thanks very much, Bill. Thank you. Before we move on, we've almost finished, I'd just like to say a thank you for Izzy, one of our team members. She's been with us some 12 months or just over, I don't know, but she's been a valuable asset. From day one, she's took into the task, and it's her last day of service in the council, I think, tonight. So she's, she's doing overtime tonight. Do you want to sign the form, Dave?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I can only just echo that it's been a pleasure to work with Izzy. She's been hugely positive and able and willing to take things on. She's been a massive asset. And Carl, who manages the teams for the city, would say, actually, not just for the north, but for the whole city, in terms of the way that she's taken things on. So we know she's going on to very exciting things, but we'll miss her.
So we've got the police here, don't all disappear straight away. We've got the police, local neighbourhood policing team here, we've got the displays at the back and we've got Josh as well, if you want to ask. And you've got your local councillors to question. I'll see you about the seats before you go, yeah, yeah, thank you. Okay, thank you all for attending. Safe journey home. Thank you.